Welcome to the Bakersfield City Council Meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 10:00 AM, and the following Wednesday at 7:00 PM. You can download the agenda for this meeting at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Presiding over this evening's meeting, the Honorable Mayor Karen K. Go.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to call to order the 5:15 regular city council meeting of January 11th, 2023. Happy New Year. Thank you all for being here. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Arias.
Here.
Councilmember Weir. Councilmember Smith.
I'm here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Here.
Councilmember Gray. Councilmember Cor.
Here.
Thank you. I'm going to offer the invocation tonight, and then following the invocation, we have the pleasure of having Gurnor Bat, who is a junior at Ridgeview High School. She's going to lead us in the pledge. The Commissioner is a Ward VII Youth Commissioner. She's a 4.0 GPA, and she's Publicity Chair for the ASB Junior Class. She's also a member of the Medical Club and the Sick Honor Society. So, we really appreciate it. She's a new appointee of our newest Councilmember, Cor. So, would you all stand and join me in the invocation, please? Heavenly Father, thank you so much that as we welcome the new year, we can also reflect back and know that this new year is built on the foundation of the wonderful Counselor, the mighty God, the everlasting Father, and the Prince of Peace. And, Father, we just ask that those characteristics of our wonderful God would pervade everything that we do in this community. As we move forward with very complex issues, Father, we ask for divine solutions, your divine revelation. Give us those solutions way beyond human ability to figure them out. There are so many issues that still face us, but thank you that we can have confidence that as you go before us and lead the way, we can do good for the people of our community. Heavenly Father, thank you so much that we can rely on you as the good and faithful God, and we just thank you so much. In your precious name, we pray. Amen. Commissioner?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic where it stands, nation of the God, indivisible, indivisible, and just as for all.
Thank you. And would you like to introduce your guest? You may be seated.
I came here with my dad today.
Thank you so much for being here, and thank you so much, Commissioner, for serving. Here are a few guidelines to help our meeting run smoothly. We request that you turn off your phones. Please be courteous in the use of cameras and videos. For safety reasons and as a courtesy to others, no signs are allowed in the council chamber or in the lobby. Applause is allowed during the presentations portion of the meeting only, but not during the other portions of the meeting. Everyone in attendance is expected to adhere to the rules of decorum established by resolution of the City Council. Failure to abide by the City's rules of decorum, including any disruptive behavior that interferes with our ability to have an orderly and efficient meeting. Those behaviors prevent the City Council from conducting the business of the City. Consider this a first warning to everyone in attendance that conduct that disrupts the meeting may result in expulsion and/or the chambers being cleared. Behavior that disrupts the meeting includes repetitive statements, going off-topic, shouting, outbursts from the audience, and surpassing the time limit of two minutes. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Presentations, Item 4A, proclamation to Dustin Contreras, co-director of Kern Coalition Against Human Trafficking, declaring Human Trafficking Awareness Month in Bakersfield during January 2023.
It's an abomination that we will not tolerate in our city, and together we have to find solutions forward. We're so privileged to have Dustin Contreras, who's the Director of the Kern Coalition Against Human Trafficking, a group of volunteers all getting together who really care about our community, and we just thank you, Dustin, and your team for the diligent efforts to raise awareness in our community on the warning signs and ways to support victims of human trafficking. It's my honor tonight to present this proclamation, whereas human trafficking has become a modern-day version of slavery that exploits victims through coercion, and whereas human trafficking is the world's fastest-growing criminal enterprise, generating $150 billion globally, using the Internet, using social media to target adults and youth as young as 11 to 14, whereas victims are isolated and forced to hide the crime, and many local citizens are largely aware of the trafficking that's taking place in their community, and whereas Human Trafficking Awareness Month highlights the plight of victims and encourages our citizens to support anti-trafficking professionals in their continued efforts to combat all forms of human trafficking in Kern County. Now, therefore, I, Karen Go, Mayor of the City of Bakersfield, you hereby proclaim January 2023 as Human Trafficking Awareness Month in our city, and call upon all citizens to support the obliteration of this dreadful crime in our community and around the world. It's my honor to present this to you, Dustin. Thank you so much, Mr. Contreras. We'd ask you for a few words.
Thank you. I'll be brief because I forgot my glasses, so it's going to be hard. Good afternoon. Thank you, Council Madam Mayor. The estimated number of people in situation trafficking rose by 12% between 2016 and 2021. The latest international consensus study found that today some 27.6 million people around the world are living without the freedom to choose how they live and work. According to a recent report by the ILO, in the midst of the pandemic especially, we found that vulnerabilities among some populations had gotten worse. Some people saw their employment opportunities vanish. Many were willing to take any type of job in any condition rather than leave their households without an income. Some of those people were migrant workers, women, and children that were especially affected and falling prey to traffickers. The same thing happens with other global events, such as armed conflicts, natural disasters, social exclusion exacerbate vulnerabilities for people already experiencing those difficulties. As a result, new migrants, women, and children remain at a disproportionate disadvantage. Children will always be our most vulnerable potential victims of trafficking. Recently in the headlines, you all have heard of a human trafficking investigation which recovered 16 potential victims of human trafficking. The Kern Coalition Against Human Trafficking was there in the inception of that investigation along with advocates from the Open Door Network and our local law enforcement. There was a father that knew he had to do something to help his wife and child get out of the situation that they were in, so he left them to get help endangered. Law enforcement arrived along with the dedicated advocates, and the DA's office also with their human trafficking task force began to provide hope and warmth for these cold, hungry, and thirsty victims ranging from age eight to 66 years old. A lot of the team that you don't see here behind me was influential in providing that hope and warmth. The most impactful moment of all of that was towards the end, when I got to see that eight-year-old clinging to a teddy bear, smiling as she relocated with her family and said the simple words of "thank you." So, I'll pass along that same message to all of you. Thank you. Thank you for all the support that you give to the Kern Coalition Against Human Trafficking. We are kind of behind-the-scenes subject matter experts compiled of all government and non-government organizations, and we kind of guide the direction and where we go and how we influence how government and non-government organizations respond to human trafficking. So, again, I'd like to say thank you for your continued support. January is always a new year and a new way to think of how to eradicate this crime against humanity, and the mayor said it before. We hope one day that we never have to have these types of proclamations. So, thank you again. Thank you.
Presentation, Item 4B, presentation recognizing Bakersfield's 125 years of incorporation on January 11th, 2023, by Joseph Conroy, Public Information Officer for the City of Bakersfield.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Thank you for having me here tonight. I'm Joe Conroy, the Public Information Officer for the City. As you may know, today, January 11th, marks the City's 125th anniversary of its incorporation. It's basically the City's birthday, of course. That came after a special election held on January 4th, 1898, with the City's first Board of Trustees governing seven days later on the 11th. What you may not know is that this was actually the second time residents in the area had voted to incorporate, with the first time coming in 1873, but three years later, voters decided to disincorporate before another 22 years, once they decided to reincorporate once again, this time for the final time. To commemorate and recognize that anniversary, our media team with Technology Services put together a short video in commemoration of that. It's actually 125 seconds long, to be exact, and it's narrated by our own City Manager, Christian Clegg. We'd like to present that video to you now.
Bakersfield is a welcoming city of bold ideas, bold people, bold innovations, bold accomplishments. From Colonel Thomas Baker welcoming settlers to rest in his field, to growers and captains of industry, from generations of migrants that have fallen in love with Bakersfield and planted roots here, to artists, educators, and public servants. For the past 125 years, the people of Bakersfield have put food on America's tables, fueled our nation's growth, created the Bakersfield Sound, and more. We've grown from a population of around only 4,000 in 1898 to becoming home to more than 400,000 community members and still growing, now the ninth-largest city in the nation's most populous state. To this day, as we celebrate the City's 125th anniversary, I can tell you we are capturing the present with more bold ideas, sweeping updates to our highways, new and revitalized city parks, technology and entrepreneurship innovation, and new responses to public safety needs. And we will embrace a future of bold innovations that will improve the lives of our residents. We will continue to lead and innovate in energy and agriculture, create vibrant neighborhoods that offer opportunity for all, grow our own businesses and industries, continue to move people and goods and find new ways to do so, make our streets safer and cleaner for every resident and visitor to enjoy, and ultimately create an unparalleled quality of life. Growth will continue to come to Bakersfield because we are a bold and a welcoming city, where people can enjoy a high quality of life and live the American dream. So, I invite you to not only celebrate the last 125 years of our city, but also to honor the past with an eye towards what's to come. We have another amazing 125 years to look forward to.
That video will be posted on our social media pages and on the City's YouTube channel now, and so feel free to please share that on your accounts if you'd like and let your constituents see it. Before I go, Communications Coordinator Eric Galvan and I did some research, and after a lot of Internet saluting, we actually were able to track down copies of the front page of the Daily Californian, which actually preceded the Bakersfield Californian in 1898, and we actually found the front page from that paper the day after the vote. And so, we'd actually -- we actually have several that have been printed up and framed. The headline there, and you probably can't see it from where you are now, but it says, "The City of Bakersfield: A Reality Incorporation Passes. Opposition Was Strong Nowhere Rejoicing Over The Result." A little background history there on it as well. The vote was actually 387 for to 146 against, and with a population of around 4,000, it seems like voter turnout was probably a little bit of a problem then as well. But in recognition of the 125th anniversary, we had this printed and framed for the mayor and each council member as well, and we have those in the other room, which I can provide to you after the meeting.
Well, on behalf of my colleagues, we accept this. Happy birthday, Bakersfield, and it's traditionally the newest council member's job to sing happy birthday, so.
I don't know if anyone's ready for this. I was wondering if there was a cake that was going to be rolled out.
I think our City Manager would enjoy that very, very much. All right. Moving on now to public statements. In keeping with the Council's resolution, the public statements portion is now divided into two periods. There's a period for items listed on the meeting agenda and items not on the meeting agenda. Statements for items listed on tonight's agenda are given a two-minute time limit, 20 minutes total per agenda item. The consent calendars as a whole constitutes one agenda item. Statements regarding items not listed on the agenda are given a two-minute time limit, 20 minutes total. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, give them to the clerk, who will give copies to the council. If you're here to make a public statement, please fill out a public speaker card and give your completed card to the city clerk. We ask that you mark whether you're here to speak on an item listed on tonight's agenda or on a matter not on the agenda. Speakers who do not identify a specific agenda item will be presumed speakers for the non-agenda portion of the meeting. Those speakers will be called during that portion of the meeting. If you're here on hearing item 9A, now is not the time to speak. You'll be given an opportunity to speak when that item is called later in the meeting. We're very interested and concerned with your issues, however, due to the public notice requirement of the Brown Act, the council can't take action. However, council can refer your matter to committee or request that staff contact you. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers tonight regarding items listed on the agenda?
Mayor Go, we have one speaker regarding agenda items. In addition, a staff memorandum has been provided transmitting correspondence regarding item 7N.
Thank you. Would you call the speaker, please?
First speaker, Lisa Smith.
Welcome, Ms. Smith.
Thank you. Hello, everybody. I was surprised to find that we were 124, 125 years old, because my husband's family are the McKees, McKee Road and South H and McKees Library, and they're here 122 years ago. So, we've been here a while. I do not live within the city limits anymore. I live kind of behind where FedEx is on Stockdale Highway, just a little neighborhood there that's a county pocket, and I am here on the graffiti item that's on your consent agenda for a contract with the county to do graffiti removal. Three years ago, for reasons unknown, I was driving the neighborhood where my husband's family has lived for 70 years now, and I said, "This looks bad." And I called my supervisor, and he said, "Can you send me some pictures?" I went out, and in 90 minutes, I had 84 pictures of taggings within my neighborhood. I can tell you that last year, in the last six months of the year, we had four shootings in the neighborhood in front of FedEx on Bell Terrace and McDonald. We found a dead man in the morning at 6:00 AM at Fisherian Jones, which is within the county pocket, and there was one on Western like two days after another one. I blame the gang graffiti, and I know that when you're sending your police department to deal with the shooting in front of FedEx, it's the graffiti down McDonald that's causing your problems. You have the ability to deal with it, and what happens in my pocket is affecting this city that my family and I love, and I'm speaking and begging you to please adopt that resolution for graffiti removal for the benefit of all the people in the city. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers regarding items not listed on the agenda?
Yes, we have five speakers.
Go ahead and call the first one, please.
Lisa Smith.
May I ask the clerk to turn on the document camera?
Yes.
And she told me to approach and give documents to her so that they could be given to you.
Go ahead and do that.
Tell me when I can start. Now? Okay. And the camera's on? Oh. I don't know how to zoom in and all that kind of stuff. I should be a teacher. Let's just pretend you can't see this. So, again, I live in a county pocket, and I'm here to ask for help, and the problems are many, and jurisdictional is only part of it. I'm here about the TRIP construction area that's happening roughly by Stockdale, all the way to Reel, all the way to Jones, and cuts through the area here on Elcia. I've been working on trying to get this area cleaned up since June was the first time I put in a request, and for weeks, we went back and forth trying to figure out who was supposed to clean it up before the site got shut down because the contractor found human waste and drug paraphernalia and wouldn't work. So, everything got cleaned up in June. By December, it looked like this. I had been trying for two months to get it cleaned up and couldn't, so I took a day off work and got a substitute and went to every county office I could and every city office I could. This is under the City's jurisdiction. The area you're about to see, and I'm sorry, it takes me a minute to look. By the way, this area here. Is across from Kaiser Permanente, where you have sick and old people going to get help. This is by Munsey School, within two blocks. You'll notice there's no fences around it. The contractor never put them up. I don't know why. There are issues all over the place. It has been cleaned up twice. After the first cleanup, this is what it looked like with six months. It should never get here. I'm proposing solutions that I see, and they're in the packets that I gave you with these pictures. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Next speaker, please. Do you have -- Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much, Ms. Smith, for bringing this concern and for contacting me earlier this week as well. I'm sorry, I was under the weather this weekend and late last week, and we couldn't meet one-on-one, but I will ask staff if you will please reach out to graffiti removal, to the rapid response team, to our Clean City Initiative, and then also that we work and coordinate with TRIP and our contractors so we can clean up this area, because I do agree we need to make sure that we're good neighbors during construction. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
L. Dilger.
Hi.
Welcome.
My name's L. Dilger. I lived in Bakersfield here for 50 years. Currently, I have a member of the CAT Squad, which is an animal rescue that we do basically at Riverwalk Park, the City, and we do TNR and feed the cats and get them veterinary care as well. I'm concerned about the city shelter, which has a pretty dismal record, I'm sorry to say, about euthanizing healthy, normal animals. We've had 100 euthanized this week alone, and the numbers are getting worse instead of better. I just wanted to call out the city to maybe look into revamping the city shelter, which in my experience over the last, since I volunteered there, since 2013 until COVID hit, that hasn't been updated or remodeled at all, in at least those years, maybe more. There was also Best Friends Animal Society not too long ago that offered a $350,000 grant to the city, excuse me, but the city, for whatever reason, refused to comply with the paperwork that requested, and they rescinded the grant, which I think is deplorable. We'd like to also see better animal control, more staffing, I think, is required. They do say they don't have enough people on staff to take care of all the needs that the animals require. We'd like to see mandatory spay and neuter, which I think would really help cut the population down, and the animals that are euthanized are killed unnecessarily. There are laws on the books of animal abuse and neglect, but for the most part, those go unheeded, they go carried out, nobody follows up on it, and there's not too much done in that respect. So, one last thing, the people that I tell how many animals are euthanized are appalled and don't believe what I'm telling them, and I think if the city put out to our movers and shakers in the city to get something going that we could make a lot of headway.
Thank you, Mr. Dilger. Thank you. And thank you for your volunteering there, too. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Dilger, thank you so much for coming out and speaking today. Mr. Clegg, if we can bring this item to the Safe and Healthy Neighborhoods Committee in a future meeting, that'd be great. I'd like us to delve down. It's been a while since we've taken up the topic regarding the animal care facility, and I think we should explore ways in which we can address the concerns that Mr. Dilger has raised tonight.
Next speaker, please.
Ian Journey.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just to clarify the referral, the topic would be our both capital and operating improvements to the animal shelter?
That's correct.
Welcome.
Hi. Thanks for having me. Do you mind turning the camera on? Hi, my name is Ian Journey, and I'm a resident of downtown Bakersfield. Thanks for having me tonight. Currently, the City of Bakersfield's Recreation and Parks Department does not offer any amenities for bicycles, as they are banned from existing city skate parks. A solution to this could be the construction of an asphalt pump track at one of our existing city parks. A pump track, as you can see from this photo, is a small looping circuit of rollers, bank turns, and features that you can ride continuously without pedaling. Pump tracks can be ridden by cyclists of all ages and all skill levels. You don't need a special type of bike to ride on a pump track. BMX bikes, mountain bikes, kids' bikes, scooters, even skateboards can all be enjoyed on a pump track. Asphalt pump tracks specifically require less maintenance than dirt, which continually needs to be reshaped. In October of 2022, the City of Temecula completed a 12,000-square-foot pump track park at an existing city facility at the cost of $450,000. park at an existing city facility at the cost of $450,000. The beginner and advanced tracks are maintained by the city's facilities and public works departments, and riders police themselves for the most part with posted rules while on the track. My son and I attended a USA Pump Track Championship qualifier for bicycles and skateboards in Temecula last year, and the turnout was quite unbelievable. Other pump tracks have recently been constructed throughout the state, including Santa Clarita, Menifee, and Corcoran, which impressively just completed the largest pump track in North America, and they've even contracted with Red Bull to host future events in the city of Corcoran. In keeping with the purpose of the Bakersfield Public Safety and Vital City Services Measure, I believe a pump track would greatly enhance our park amenities, attract visitors, and since there are very few of these pump track facilities in California, I think these facilities could fit nicely into existing beautification projects that may already be going on through parks and rec. My son here, Eve, has been asking, we go to him a lot, he loves racing and riding his bike, so he asked me, how do we get one in Bakersfield? So here we are, and I couldn't get him to talk, but maybe next meeting. So thank you very much for having us.
Thank you, Mr. Journey, and thank you, Mr. Journey. Next speaker, please.
M.T. Miracle.
Sure.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor Go. My name is M.T. Miracle. Let me begin by recognizing what a great privilege and honor it is to stand before our elected city council members and have an opportunity to be heard. Thank you for your courage, your willingness to listen to others, and for the integrity that is needed to hold a position of leadership. I am sincere about that statement, whether you support my position on legalization of backyard hens or not. Thank you for being a council member. It is known that I am part of a large and ever-growing backyard hen community. Two years ago, the backyard hen community spent months informing this council regarding the safe and positive qualities of backyard hens. Through that work, our council passed an ordinance with safeguards and restrictions that allowed backyard hen ownership. I thank the council for doing that. However, the new ordinance did not go into effect. With the recent election cycle and new council members, it is my intention to work respectfully with this city to build on the good work that has already been accomplished with regards to legalizing backyard hens. At a future meeting, I will present an updated ordinance proposal that takes into account the concerns learned from community members. This council has the ability to work together, find common ground, and make compromises to legalize hen ownership, and then stand behind that decision. I would like your input. I have provided you with my contact information and encourage you to reach out to me with any questions. Thank you again for allowing me to be heard. Let's finish the work that has been started and make Bakersfield hen-friendly.
Thank you, Mr. Miracle. Next speaker, please.
Michael Turnipseed.
Welcome.
Madam Mayor, thank you. I'm Michael Turnipseed, speaking for myself today. Some of you know, on January 2nd, my car got pummeled for a period of almost 30 minutes by a discombobulated homeless person on 19th and K. The police were called four different times, and the people were told, well, we'll get there when we can. It can be a category-two issue. Over the time, I have a video from the Crest Building that shows, these are the highlights. You don't want to really care because you spend a lot of time walking down the street and coming back. But the big issue that had happened was, A, I could have been sitting there all day. I could still be sitting there. If it's a category-two, nobody called back the merchants and people on the street that actually made the calls in. I didn't make the call. But most of this concerning, but I want to thank the mayor. I called the mayor and said, we've been waiting 40 minutes, 45 minutes. I want to go home. I want to tow my car away. And she had the, at least, two police cars there, and within 10 minutes, thank you, Madam Mayor, got to call the right people, I guess. But more disconcerting, when the police showed up, there were two. One took pictures, the other officer took the report, went and talked to the witnesses, and then she started talking to me, and she said, first question was, what's your insurance deductible? I said, $500. Oh, this is a misdemeanor. I had $5,000 worth of damage on my car. So I said, what happens if they waive? Because this is vandalism, usually they waive the deductible. So there's no deductible. Well, then there's not a crime because you weren't damaged. Lost a car, car rental, duh, go down the whole thing. Yeah, your clock's running fast, I only got a minute and 47 seconds. But the issue is this, and here is the video. When an officer says the amount of crime, the difference between no crime is my deductible and not what the insurance company pays or the actual damage, I think we have a problem. And especially after somebody who supported Measure N, and your city's received $248, $284, $80 million over the last three years. And this is the kind of action when we get, I know what it is now to be a merchant and have your front window bashed out, and nobody really cares.
Thank you, Mr. Turnipseed. Councilmember Freeman.
I'd like to ask the city attorney, is that correct, that if you don't have insurance, you would have been covered? But what does insurance have to do with the amount of damage that a vandal does to your property?
Vice Mayor, Councilmember Freeman, I'm not aware of that. I would think that it may come
I didn't.
I'm not saying you did, Mr. Turnipseed. I'm not aware as to why that would be an issue criminally. I'd have to check with the police department. I've never heard that before.
The issue that you consider the deductible, or if someone, you know, goes to your home because it does $5,000 worth of damage, that, first, isn't that a crime?
Again, Vice Mayor, Councilmember Freeman, I would think that that's a crime. Perhaps the district attorney's office has a certain threshold as to whether it's petty theft or aggravated assault, et cetera. I'd have to check with them. I'm more than happy to check with them and get back to you.
I doubt it's a misdemeanor if it's 5,000, and I'd like to know, and everyone to know, if the police are supposed to be finding out what your deductible is. To me, that would be completely irrelevant to whether you have insurance or don't.
I concur with you. I agree with you.
And maybe you could, you know, give us some feedback and get Mr. Turnipseed some feedback, because that just seems like, it sounds wrong, and if it's wrong, we need to educate our police officers that it is wrong.
Agreed.
Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman. Madam Clerk, are there any other speakers?
Mayor Go, no.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Appointment, item 6A, appointment of one member-at-large to the Golden Empire Transit District Board, term to expire January 6, 2027, due to the expiration of term of Cindy Parra.
Thank you. And there's only one applicant, and that is Ms. Parra. Councilmember, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to appoint Cindy Parra to the Golden Empire Transit District Board.
Thank you. You have a motion? Please cast your votes. We need some help here with technology. Having some voting issues. Actually, while
Mayor Go, we can do a roll call vote?
Go ahead and do, yes, roll call.
Mayor Go. Vice Mayor Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Arias.
Aye.
Councilmember Weir is absent. Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Freeman?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray is absent. Councilmember Core?
Yes.
Motion is approved with Councilmember Weir and Councilmember Gray absent.
Thank you. Next appointment, please. And, oh, congratulations, and thank you so much for serving. I see Ms. Parra is in the audience, and we just really appreciate your many years of service, and congratulations again.
Appointment 6B, appointment of eight members to the Keep Bakersfield Beautiful Committee due to the term expirations of regular members, Jenna Lee Furman, Ward 1, Ray Scott, Ward 3, Brooks Douglas, Ward 4, Paul Yanez, Ward 7, and alternate members, Anna Smith, Ward 1, Jennifer Van Alstine, Ward 3, Sophia Felix, Ward 4, Teresa Olson, Ward 7, and we have received 10 applications. From Teresa Olson, Brooks Douglas, Raymond Scott, J.P. Masuda, Paul Yanez, Rafael Molina, Sophia Felix, Joshua Yorcanon, Jenna Lee Furman, and Harwant Gil.
Thank you. These appointments are by ward, therefore no ballots are required. I'm going to call on Councilmembers Arias, Councilmember Weir is absent, Smith, and then Councilmember Core for the wards of the regular and alternate council members. So Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Mayor.
Sorry, committee members.
It is my honor to nominate and reappoint Jenna Lee Furman to represent Ward 1 on the Keep Bakersfield Beautiful Committee.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the work Keep Bakersfield Beautiful does. Brooks Douglas, you've been serving for a long time, and Sophia Felix also, so I would renominate them both and appreciate their work. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Core?
Thank you, Mayor. I have the opportunity to nominate my first appointment, and I myself was on the Keep Bakersfield Beautiful Committee and have very fond memories, and just got to learn so much from the group then, and I see some in the audience today. So today, I get to nominate two folks. For my regular appointment, I will be nominating Harwant Core Gil, and I would just like to share a little bit about Harwant, who is here today as well. Harwant expressed interest in Keep Bakersfield Beautiful long before I was ever thinking of running, but she is someone who has probably planted more trees in the city of Bakersfield than I know, and she has implemented biodegradable and recyclable kind of practices within different places of worship and in our community, and is also the brains behind a thriving dental facility, and volunteers her time throughout the city, also with the Bakersfield Sick Women's Association. So I think you would make a great addition and a leading voice, so I thank you for wanting to volunteer for our city. And I'm also happy to be re-nominating Paul Yanez, who also, you know, agreed to be an alternate. He actually, if Paul's okay with me sharing, was willing to also be on the advisory board if I had somebody else in mind, which is just like Paul, and very generous and gracious in his volunteerism. So I want to thank Paul because he was also on Keep Bakersfield Beautiful when I was on the committee. So those are my two appointments for Keep Bakersfield Beautiful. Thank you, you, too.
Thank you, Councilmember Core. Motion?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to appoint all the aforementioned nominations.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes. And I know that a couple of you are here, but your elected official is not here today, so we'll take it up another time.
Mayor Go, motion is approved with Councilmember Weir and Councilmember Gray absent.
Thank you very much, and thank you, congratulations to all of you. For those of you who are here, and I see a number of others from the Keep Bakersfield Beautiful Committee, thank you so much for your service. This is one of the hardest-working, if not the hardest-working, committee. Who wants to go out there and pick up people's messes? But they go out, they do that week after week and beautify our committee, so our community. Thank you so much to all of you for your service and your willingness to serve again. Next item, please.
Item 6C, appointment of three members to Bakersfield Public Safety Vital City Services Measure Citizens Oversight Committee due to the term expiration of Mark Dewey, Ward 1, Ken Keller, Ward 3, Nicholas Ortiz, Ward 4, Matav Singh, Ward 7. We have received three applications from Mark Dewey, Nicholas Ortiz, and Norma Rojas-Mora.
Thank you. These appointments are by ward, therefore no ballots are required. I'm going to call on the council members again and ask them for their nominations. Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Mayor. It is my honor tonight to nominate Mark Dewey to be my representative. He has done a fabulous job on the Measure N Committee and look forward to continuing his work there on that committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Arias. Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, Nick Ortiz is doing a great job, and I appreciate his work, and we'll re-nominate him. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Core?
Thank you, Mayor. So I feel incredibly humble to be nominating Norma Rojas-Mora to our PSVS Committee today. Norma is a pillar in our community, truly holding up so many different causes, and a visionary. She's been instrumental in creating and obtaining funding for countless vital programs in our community. She's the Executive Director of Government Relations and Government with the Kern Community College District, and Norma has over 20 years of experience as an administrator at the Housing Authority of the County of Kern. She has served as the president of the Latina Leaders of Kern County, and has served on the boards of the Bakersfield College Foundation, Bakersfield Women's Business Conference, Stewards &amp; Inc., Kern Community Foundation's Women and Girls Fund Advisory Committee, and Workforce Investment Board, as well as the Kern Hispanic Chamber's Latino COVID-19 Task Force, just to name a few. I think I missed them. Norma Rojas-Mora has a Master's of Science degree in administration from CSU Bakersfield, and a Bachelor's of Arts in Sociology and Chicana/Chicano Studies from UCLA. She's a woman in leadership whose success I look up to and admire, and Norma will make a dedicated, grounded, thoughtful, and wise addition to this committee, and I'm so proud to also say she's a Ward 7 resident. So thank you for volunteering your time to serve the city, Norma.
Thank you, Councilmember Core.
I move to appoint the aforementioned nominations.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Mayor Go, motion is approved with Councilmember Weir and Councilmember Gray absent.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Dewey, Mr. Ortiz, and Ms. Rojas-Mora. Thank you so much for being here also tonight. We appreciate your willingness to serve. Next item, please.
Item 6D, one appointment at large to the Miscellaneous Department Civil Service Board due to the term expiration of Patrick Bowers on December 31, 2022. Two applications were received, one from Patrick Bowers and another from Jenna Lee Furman. A staff memorandum has been received transmitting correspondence to withdraw Jenna Lee Furman's application.
Thank you. Motion?
Move to approve or appoint Patrick Bowers to the Civil Service, Miscellaneous Department Civil Service Board.
Thank you. You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Mayor Go, motion is approved with Councilmember Weir and Councilmember Gray absent.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bowers, for your willingness to serve again. Next appointment, please.
Item 6E, appointments to city council committees and other special committees and boards by Vice Mayor Gonzalez for 2023 through 2025.
Thank you, Mayor.
Vice Mayor?
I want to first thank all of my colleagues for meeting with me over the last month to discuss your goals and objectives for the next year. I found those meetings very productive and look forward to the future of this city council over the next two years. I'm very proud to work closely with you as your vice mayor. Tonight, I am happy to announce my appointments to the council boards and committees. To Budget, Finance, and Economic Development Committee, the chair, Andre Gonzalez, myself, members Ken Weir and Eric Arias. Legislation and Litigation Committee, Chair Bruce Freeman, members Munpreet Core and Andre Gonzalez. Personnel Committee, Ken Weir is the chair, members Bob Smith and Patty Gray. The Planning and Development Committee, Chair Munpreet Core, members Bruce Freeman and Bob Smith. For Safe and Healthy Neighborhoods Committee, the chair will be Eric Arias, with members Patty Gray and Munpreet Core. On the Water Board, On the Water Board, Chair Bob Smith, members Bruce Freeman and Andre Gonzalez. And for Housing and Homelessness Committee, Chair Andre Gonzalez, members Eric Arias and Ken Weir. And finally, for our Ad Hoc Committee on Multimodal Transportation and Traffic Safety, the Chair, Eric Arias, members Bob Smith and Munpreet Core. Additional appointments include to Kern Cog, appointment of Bob Smith with the alternate being Eric Arias. Kern EDC Appointment, Bruce Freeman. Kern River Groundwater Sustainability Appointment, Bob Smith. LAFCO Appointee, myself, Andre Gonzalez, alternate Munpreet Core. Solid Waste Management Advisory Appointee, Ken Weir with the alternate being Patty Gray. And finally, the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District Appointee, Eric Arias with the alternate Munpreet Core. That is my motion.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved with Councilmember Freeman voting no and Councilmember Weir and Councilmember Gray absent.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Item 7, Consent Calendar 7A through 7A N. We have also received a memorandum transmitting signed agreement regarding Item 7K.
Does any council member wish to recuse themselves from any item? Does any council member wish to remove any consent calendar item for separate consideration? Hearing none, I'd like to make a motion to approve consent calendar items 7A through 7A N.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Mayor Go, motion is approved with Councilmember Weir and Councilmember Gray absent.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Item hearings, Item 9A, public hearing to consider Amendment Number 2 to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development HUD Action Plan Fiscal Year 2022 through 2023 Transferring $333,000 of Community Development Block Grant CDBG Funds from Jewett Avenue Curb Gutter and Sidewalk Project to Ohio Drive Curb Gutter and Sidewalk Project. We have also received a memorandum correcting agenda title from Jewetta to Jewett.
Thank you. Our next public hearing item, for each side will be allowed 15 minutes. It's 15 minutes for all speakers per side, so it's important that you identify yourself, make your statements succinctly so others may speak. We'll hear first from those opposed to the staff's recommendation, then we'll hear from those who'd like to speak in favor of staff's recommendation. If there's testimony on both sides, each side will be allowed a five-minute rebuttal. There's a clock on the TV screens behind me which indicates 15 minutes. Please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and after 14 minutes, a yellow light will come on. At the end of 15 minutes, a red light will flash indicating your time is up. Quickly enter statement. You may ask questions during your statement, but they won't be addressed until the public hearing is closed. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, please give them to the clerk. She'll give copies to the council. Please be courteous to others who wish to speak. Madam Clerk, we've already read the public hearing item and so now I'd like to call on staff for comments. Mr. Clegg.
Thank you, Mayor. Go, we'll ask our Economic Community Development Director, Paul Soldania, to speak briefly to this item.
Welcome, Mr. Soldania.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. This item before you this evening is an amendment to our city's U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Action Plan. The current action plan provided for two curb gutter and sidewalk projects, one on Jewett and the other on Ohio Drive Avenue. Upon reviewing the cost of the projects, the Public Works Department requested that the funds initially set aside for the Jewett Avenue project be transferred to Ohio Drive. The Jewett project will be completed as part of a separate Public Works project and the transfer to Ohio Drive will allow for that project to be expanded. Under HUD guidelines, the transfer is considered a substantial amendment and so it requires us to amend that previously approved plan and we have that here before you. In conformance with the federal guidelines, a 30-day public hearing notice was published providing the opportunity for public comment to the change. The project meets all of the regulatory requirements under HUD guidelines and therefore staff recommends approval of the amendment. I'd be happy to answer any question.
Thank you. Is this item already opened? Okay, got a little mistake here. At this time, I'll open this item. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Seeing none, is there anyone who wishes to speak in support or favor? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and return it to council for comment and action. Motion?
Mayor, I move to approve the action plan amendment and transferring funds.
Thank you. You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Mayor Go, motion is approved with Councilmember Weir and Councilmember Gray absent.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Council and Mayor's Statements.
Is there anybody who wishes to speak? Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a few comments tonight. First and foremost, as many people in this room know and hopefully the community knows, homelessness is our number one issue in the city of Bakersfield and today we received some great news on that front in that our Brundis Lane Navigation Center, our Low Barrier Navigation Center, has made its 200th permanent housing placement today. 200 vulnerable men and women who would have been on our streets or in a congregant facility are now in permanent housing. They have a bed, they have a warm place of their own tonight because of the work that this council, that our city staff, that this community has committed to over the last few years and that should be commended. BLNC is doing tremendous work and I just want to recognize Mercy House, our service provider there at Brundis Lane Navigation Center, as well as Flood Ministries and many other service providers who are working day and night, literally, to help those most vulnerable on our streets. I'm looking forward to the expansion of BLNC, but certainly tonight we should all celebrate just a bit and then get back to work. Number two is during my appointments this evening, you might have noticed that I did not appoint anyone to the Community Services Committee. I do not intend to. This was intentional and part of my larger effort and hope this year that we'll be able to realign our committees in the near future. I'm hoping that our committees will be able to align with our city goals and objectives in that front or on that front. Within the next four weeks, the city council will participate in a council vision and goals workshop where we will clarify our collective vision for the city of Bakersfield, will be able to reaffirm our council goals, and then establish clear objectives along with metrics and measures to really measure our progress and timelines moving forward. My hope is that we'll be able to better utilize our committees in order to help us reach those goals and better work with city staff so that we're far more effective and efficient in our efforts. And then finally, I have two shout-outs. Number one, I want to thank the Public Works Department and Mr. Stockluss, your whole team and all the wonderful efforts you've done over the last few months in terms of sprucing up downtown. Lots of things on my to-do list for years were accomplished this last fall and I'm just so excited. For those of you who may not be aware, but we've for years have had many bollards within the downtown core that have been lighted and they've been electrified and they've been a constant issue for the city, vandalized. The product was not durable enough. It did not stand the tests of skateboarders and other individuals who would go by and lean on them and so we needed a durable product. And so I'm very, very excited with the new bollards out on Chester, on 19th Street and I, in Mill Creek. I think we refurbished over 139 bollards and installed 92 new ones in just downtown, but also throughout Mill Creek and my constituents certainly appreciate it. So thank you so much to your team. I'm just going to ask you one thing and that is you give me a time of day that I can bring donuts to your whole crew because I'd like to personally thank them as well. And then also, one last thing if I may, we have finally solved the chronic issue regarding the dumpster at the parking structure on 18th Street and I. This is the photo, this is the before photo of these dumpsters that are actually, you know, a collective dumpster for many of the restaurants in the area. It was something that we built during the redevelopment of that particular corridor of downtown years ago, but it's sort of a tragedy of the commons in that everyone uses it, but no one's really responsible for these dumpsters. And so this is the before picture, but the city, we've gotten to work and working diligently. Let's look at the after. Beautiful caged dumpsters, locked, secured, clean, and the neighbors and the businesses in that area certainly appreciate it. So I'm really excited about this and I'm hoping that this becomes a model for many private business owners and property owners to also better protect their dumpsters as well so we can continue to upgrade downtown Bakersfield. So again, another salute to Public Works and all their efforts on an ongoing basis. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman.
Thank you, Mayor. Some wanted to follow up to Andre's comments on homelessness and this is not undercut, I do appreciate the tireless efforts our staff has made and the great progress we're making, but I've been conducting a little poll on what is the most important issue in Bakersfield to the citizens, with citizens in from every single ward. The unanimous response, in fact, they don't say anything else anymore, is, and they phrase it like this, "Please get the homeless off the streets." I didn't stage Mr. Turnipseed's speech tonight, but that's why. And they, at this point, are reaching utter frustration and frenzy and fear, but it's reached a crisis level among our public. I can tell you, when you ask that question, you get an earful and it doesn't matter who you ask anymore and they can be way out in Ward 7, Ward 5. So when we go into discussions of our priorities, which we'll soon be doing, it seems to me that number one will have to be finding ways to do even more with whatever we want to say, controlling homelessness. You know, it's the violent ones and the crazy ones. It isn't everybody, but it's the damage and the fear. All these women won't walk in the bike path anymore. They've all been accosted, they're scared to death to go out there now. It's bad and I think somehow we have to bring an awareness to the staff, all the people working on this, who are doing a good job. This is almost an impossible thing to solve and our hands are tied behind our backs, I know, but it is the biggest issue with the public right now is they don't feel safe anymore. It's inhibiting our redevelopment of downtown. People won't go downtown. I can tell you, when something like that happens to you, you get violated, he will tell 100 people or 200. You're so upset, you know, that when something good happens, you tell three people, when something bad happens, you tell 300. That's true. So that's how the word spreads in people and our image and it hurts downtown more than any place because how are we going to revive our downtown if they hear stories like this? Nobody's going down there for any reason. So I just want to raise that. Everybody's trying real hard, but let's remember, I think the public is saying that's our number one issue to deal with over the next year to make whatever improvement we can. Okay, enough said on that. I have two items that I would like to send to the Planning and Development Committee, both because they have happened in my ward. And one, Mr. Boyle and I have been talking about for quite a while now, is the small lot subdivisions that we want people to start building smaller lots to create more affordable housing. We can't do it without smaller lots, but we recently had some maps come in that were my ward and I looked down and was appalled. I found out they'd already really upset our planning director with it just going to be a barracks. And if you do small lot, little single-family homes, you create a barracks, you're going to have a slum in about two years. It's going to be the worst thing you've ever seen. So we need a little green space, a little open space, you know, pocket parks, maybe enhanced sidewalks with separation of lawns, something to create green space, some tiny bit of amenity if we're going to go that small. Everybody else does it that way and apparently we have a workaround I wasn't aware of. I thought you had to go through a PUD to do this, but these clever fellows came in and they found, Mr. Boyle explained it, well, if you have like high density, you can somehow do it without a PUD. I'd never seen it before and they had little 3,000-square-foot shoeboxes and no amenities, it was sort of bleak. And so I want us to come up with, I don't know if it's ordinance, I don't know how to describe it, but a change so that if you don't want to do a PUD, and maybe we just have, say, you can't do it without one and get rid of the workaround, but if there's a way to just say, you know, you can do this and you don't have to go through a planning commission if you follow some formulaic thing of a certain amount of green space is acceptable to the planning director, that's okay with me, but we have to make sure we build projects that are going to be nice and that won't turn into slums quickly. So that's one thing I would like to see us, I'm sure you've already thought a lot about this, but, Mr. Boyle, help us come up with solutions for this because there'll be more coming in. Apparently they submitted two maps around town. I just got wind of one right down, you know, over in West Main. And the other, it kind of harks back, another one came into my ward was these rental subdivisions that are now popular all over the United States where a full subdivision of 300 homes is all built for rental, the whole thing. It isn't for sale, it's a single-family detached home rental subdivision, all for rent, which we think is great, you know, we need homes, we need more rental homes, there's a demand for them. And these people were going to fortunately gate it and they were going to have the common area landscaping and everything taken care of, but including all the front yards, which if you may remember, two years ago, we conditioned a duplex project that they would have to have the management company do all the front yards because if you've seen duplex projects in this town, they look horrible without the uniform look through the neighborhood. So we need something about rental subdivisions on how they'll be managed or amenitized, but if you would put some thought into this. Another one will come in. I think we had one come in, I don't know if they ever built it. Then the last one, after we spent two months working on it, the interest rates went up, housing went crazy and the whole thing collapsed and they couldn't build it, which was a shame because it would have provided badly needed rental housing, but we need something that also protects the quality of these places and I think, would you put some thought into what other people did? Maybe, well, you have to have the management company take care of all the front. Something that preserves the quality, when you drive down the street, hey, this looks like a nice neighborhood, but when you don't do that, we have seen one neighbor does a beautiful, on his lawn, his yard, and the next one looks like it's an abandoned house. You go, look, the renter doesn't feel he's got a stake in the game. So I don't think that's, those are hard, the first one might be a little hard to say, but to come up with recommendations on how we can condition those kinds of projects to preserve the quality of the appearance. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman. Councilmember Smith. Thank you, Councilmember Freeman. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to respond to the recommendation on the pump track idea, and nobody made a referral or anything. I'm not sure where it should go, but it, you know, it looks like a good idea to me. And I've also gotten feedback in the community about a mountain bike park. And I know we've talked about that in different areas. But I think these recreation facilities that are different from what we have, like you mentioned, I see bicycles all the time at the skate parks, and they're not supposed to be there. And so, you know, can we create something for them? In particular, I think it's a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd be happy to accept a referral to bring that to the ad hoc on transportation.
Yeah, that sounds like a good idea.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. I, I'm just so excited and really thankful in the first place to Vice Mayor Gonzalez for accepting my request to establish the ad hoc on multimodal transportation. I think historically, many cities, not just the city of Bakersfield, has placed a very strong emphasis on the safety and the ability for an auto vehicle to get from point A to point B, and in the meantime, sacrificing some of the protections and safety measures that should go in place to also protect our bicyclists and to also protect those who are walking to and from A, point A and point B. And I also want to thank Councilmember Bob Smith for championing a lot of the efforts to address some of these multimodal transportation efforts in the city. And I think it's, you know, we're ready to kick it into high gear. So with that, I would like to make a number of referrals tonight for the Multimodal Transportation Committee to take a look at. The first is to explore a plan to install continental crosswalks and additional pedestrian safety measures on any crosswalk that is adjacent to a school, a park, a daycare center, and a church slash place of worship. The second is to look into proactive measures to installing bicycle lanes on all collector and arterial streets in the city that currently do not have them. The third is to have the committee to, and actually, I'll back up here to give some context. The President Biden's infrastructure plan that he passed last year is a transformative piece of legislation that's going to invest in many communities, cities, counties, states, across the country. It has come to my awareness that the way in which those funds will be distributed will be through competitive applications for regional transportation projects, which means that we will have to apply for these funds. These funds will not automatically come to the city of Bakersfield. They will not come to the county of Kern automatically, which means that we need competitive applications that include shovel-ready projects that require design elements to be 100% ready to go, which is a lot of work for anybody, especially staff and our partners that help make that process happen. So with that, I would like for the Transportation Committee to also explore options to utilize ARPA funding to fast-track the design of multimodal regional transportation capital improvement projects such as the H Street Canal Bikin Pedestrian Path, as well as the Mill Creek Extension Project, utilizing the request for proposals project, process. And lastly, I want to give a big shout-out to the Public Works Department. They have been working diligently with a third-party contractor to bring back the traffic calming toolkit. And I'm looking forward to bringing that to the Transportation Ad Hoc Committee to review that as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Arias. Councilmember Kaur.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to echo what Councilmember Arias has recommended. I think those are great recommendations, and I also can't wait to explore a lot of them. You know, whether you are getting around by foot, cycle, scooter, wheelchair, bus, or your private vehicle, I think everyone has the right to get around safely and efficiently. And that's a high priority for myself as well. I just wanted to, in closing, take a moment to thank my fellow council members as well as city staff, and just give my most heartfelt thank you for your generosity and grace in my onboarding process so far. Thank you for your patience with me as I give this new role the due diligence that it deserves. The past few weeks have been filled with excitement, a lot of reflection on what I've heard going door-to-door. And I'm taking stock of what I've heard as I'm learning about different city processes and as well as my experience in studying cities. And I'm just really excited to go forward with a shared vision for our city and working on that. And lastly, in closing, I want to wish everyone a day of remembrance and reflection as we honor Martin Luther King Jr. And just wanted to close by sharing one of my favorite quotes from one of their speeches that I was listening to. And I thought, as we're talking about, I mean, it couldn't be a better time to share as we're talking about transportation. But Martin Luther King Jr. was talking to a group of high schoolers, and he said, he asked them, "What is the blueprint of your life?" Whenever a building is constructed, they have an architect who draws a blueprint. "This blueprint serves as the pattern, as the guide, as the model for those who are to build the building. And a building is not well-made without a good sound of solid blueprint. And in your life's blueprint, there must be a commitment to the eternal principles of beauty, love, and justice. However young you are, you have a responsibility to seek to make your nation a better nation in which to live, a responsibility to seek to make life better for everybody. So you must be involved in the struggle for freedom and justice." And I just thought that was very fitting to close my first official city council meeting. So thank you, my fellow city council members. Thank you, city staff, for your patience. I'm excited to continue to learn and serve.
Thank you, Councilmember Kaur. Councilmember Smith, you get one more chance.
Thank you. All this talk about multimodal transportation.
It's got you excited.
Gets me so excited, you know, I have to jump in on it. We had, a long time ago, this conversation started about the subdivision standards, and I had referred it to planning development. I assume now, and I talked to staff, I just publicly want to say, I assume that's going to the multimodal transportation and traffic safety. And I think as we look at those subdivision standards and our new street standards, that, and again, I've talked this over with staff, but it makes sense to have, instead of just bicycle lanes, we have buffered bike lanes, which we've had a few of, and cycle tracks become a standard. And I think that is the direction that we need to go. And so I just wanted to make sure that staff knew that that was the direction that I'm looking forward to. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Freeman, you talked about homelessness and the, the issue of it within our city. It is upon everybody's mind. Homelessness is the paramount issue facing Californians. In my discussions with the big-city mayors, we have made that our priority. We spoke with the governor's office this last week. We had sent a letter ahead of time indicating that to be a priority. We have to address it both locally, but we also need legislation to address it. We were working with Senator Egman also on the issues of mental health and some of the reforms also needed there. And so all of us together, this is a huge issue for our community. I hear about it, I'm sure all of you do every day. Just know that we're working on this at all levels. And I think united as Californians, we're going to have to move forward, and we will move forward. Councilmember Kaur, you talked about Dr. King. And I just wanted to remind us, 8:30 breakfast on Monday, there's youth service programs, projects, there's the march, and there's the church service. So if you want to honor Dr. King, there are many opportunities on Monday. Thank you all for meeting today, and with this, we're adjourned at 6:41.